Do I gotta recuse myself in that first thing again? Even though it's just trying to get back.
Jim was telling me before it started that he wanted to read it anyway.
Oh, yeah. Ready? Okay. All right, let's call the zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, May 14, 2025 to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Baranski.
Here.
Spivey.
Here.
Belky.
Here.
Mannahan.
Here.
Sonny.
Here.
And Weather is absent. Rosenbaum.
Yes. Okay, we have a quorum. So 25Z 2004 is public comment. Not to see 15 minutes per agenda item or three minutes per speaker. Anybody here want to address the board? All right, seeing none. The next order is an entertaining motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of April 9, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the week of April 9, 2025.
We've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? Any discussion? Not? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed to any carry. Unfinished business. This is 25S-01. Galena Unit School Disagreeing of the Finding of Facts for the Request for Special Use Permit to Allow a Digital Message Board Sign at Galena High School. Determination based upon the facts. In this case, the Zoning Board of Appeals does find and conclude that the request by the by Galena Unit School District for a special use permit to allow a digital message board sign in front of the Galena High School be approved for the following reasons. One, the site plan review met the criteria for this request. Two, the request is compatible with the district standards for the PUD with an underlying zoning district of low density residential and is consistent with the defining characteristics of the district. Three, the specific standards for the PUD with an underlying zoning district of low density residential are met. Four, complimentary uses are available. Five, the request's compatibility with adjoining properties through A, the protection of privacy is met. B, the elements of the plan to have a minimal negative impact on the use and enjoyment of adjoining property is met. And C, the elements of the plan will coexist in a harmonious manner with nearby existing properties. Decisions, calendar number 25S-01. Now therefore be it resolved that this zoning board of appeals would determine that this request by the Galena Unit zoning or Galena Unit School District for a special use permit to allow a digital message board sign in front of the Galena High School be approved. So I think we need to have a motion on that and then a second and then.
So move. Move to approve.
Move to approve.
To approve.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Change, modifications? No? Okay, can you call the vote?
Belky.
Aye.
Mannahan.
Yes.
Sonny.
Yes.
Baranski.
Yes.
Spivey.
Yes.
Okay, Rosie can come back.
Get too eager to give back.
I don't want to be the chair. Good job. Sorry, Jonathan, didn't work out.
It's one method. Take the square one.
Okay, let the record show that I have returned. All right. Next order of business is 25V-02 Public Hearing. Owner, applicant Melissa Hammer requests for a variance to reduce the west front set back to 10 feet to allow for the preferred placement of a new single-family residence facing Bridge Street at 906 Bridge Street. This being a public hearing with next to our public hearings besides. So whoever's going to speak in any one of the public hearings, I'll have Ms. Will swear you in now. We'll get that over with. So raise your right hand and.
Intend to speak, please raise your right hand. You two, do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Okay, and you both have signed? Okay, awesome. Thank you. So I guess we'll start with our first entertaining motion for public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing on 25 Victor 02.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed to any carry. Young lady, would you like to come forward? State your name and address for the record and then explain to us what it is you're looking for.
My name is Melissa Hammer. And I'm asking for a variance on the lot at 906 Bridge Street. I'd like to go from a single-family home on that lot. And I'm asking for the lot to have a variance of 10 foot instead of the 40 foot on the west side.
Okay, any questions of the applicant?
I actually do have a quick question. Or is there anything you'd like to say first?
No, just that this is a family lot that's been in our family for hundreds of years. And we originally owned a family farm, so we'd like to go in.
I always wondered if you owned that because I remember your mom and dad's house and then Dayton's built next door, so I didn't really think there was a full lot in there.
I didn't either.
I didn't.
So I know the.
Yeah, I was born and grew up on the corn lot.
Okay. So I know the city does not want to vacate the side, backside, whatever you want to call it down in there. The only question I would ask you is you're going to be 10 to 12 foot off of that. You know, if the city would have to run lines or, you know, change that up a bit. Any issues with you?
No, actually, I would like to work with the city to be able to maintain that area.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
So I have a question, I guess it's because it says in here the city has no plans for doing anything in that right of way.
Plans for infrastructure as far as water sewer at this point. We, there are plans that has for kind of stormwater drainage through there.
Right.
But that's out of the, out of the scope of where she wants her house.
Yeah, okay, but even if you were going to do any infrastructure, it could be on the right of way.
Be in the right of way, not on her.
Not on her property anyway. Okay. Because that, because actually that runs from there down so far and then they vacate.
That's actually Clinton Street, so that runs all the way down to, I think, where Bridge Street, not Bridge Street.
Hickory?
Hickory runs through.
To my old, where I used to live.
Yep.
But I thought it got vacated in between there years back. This was never vacated.
It's still never vacated, it's still right of way all the way through.
All right, that makes sense. Okay, any other questions? Is there anything else, Melissa, you want to say? Okay.
I'm forward to moving into the city itself.
You just wanted to tell the truth for the next 24 hours. Anyone else to speak in favor of the request? Anyone to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none, I entertain the motion to close the public hearing. Then a motion to a second.
Second.
At a second, all those in favor to close the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed to any carry. Okay. So on. I'll make a motion on it, if that's all right. I'll make a motion that we direct Jonathan to draft a positive finding of fact for calendar item number 25V-02.
I'll second that.
Second. Yeah, I will, we'll read the thing, but I would just say in general, I mean, this is the kind of thing that a variance is for. This is one of those super idiosyncratic situations we have in Galena that are numerous. And so I think this is, this is what variances are really meant for. So. It's a good use for that property. You said, I didn't realize the property, what are you, big enough? You know, I thought it was just a narrow strip.
Election thing right there. Yeah, that'd be nice.
Well, it'd be nice to have another house in there, so. So let's go through the criteria. So number one, the question is whether the hardship is unique to the property and not self-inflicted. It is unique and it is not self-inflicted. Number two, does the variance confer special privileges on the applicant that does not? Three, the literal interpretation of provisions of the regulations would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. Four, I think it demonstrates that this is a reasonable use of the property by granting the variance. Five, I think it's the minimum necessary. Six, it's certainly compatible with adjacent properties. The variances will not be injurious to or reduce the value of adjacent properties. Seven, the variance will not conflict with the purposes and intents of the code, of this code. And eight, it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve. Do you call the roll, please?
Mannahan.
Yes.
Sonny.
Yes.
Baranski.
Yes.
Spivey.
Yes.
Belky.
Yes.
Rosenbaum.
Yes. Okay, we have a quorum. So 25Z 2004 is public comment. Not to see 15 minutes per agenda item or three minutes per speaker. Anybody here want to address the board? All right, seeing none. The next order is an entertaining motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of April 9, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the week of April 9, 2025.
We've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? Any discussion? Not? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed to any carry. Unfinished business. This is 25S-01. Galena Unit School Disagreeing of the Finding of Facts for the Request for Special Use Permit to Allow a Digital Message Board Sign at Galena High School. Determination based upon the facts. In this case, the Zoning Board of Appeals does find and conclude that the request by the by Galena Unit School District for a special use permit to allow a digital message board sign in front of the Galena High School be approved for the following reasons. One, the site plan review met the criteria for this request. Two, the request is compatible with the district standards for the PUD with an underlying zoning district of low density to residential and is consistent with the defining characteristics of the district. Three, the specific standards for the PUD with an underlying zoning district of low density residential are met. Four, complimentary uses are available. Five, the request's compatibility with adjoining properties through A, the protection of privacy is met. B, the elements of the plan to have a minimal negative impact on the use and enjoyment of adjoining property is met. And C, the elements of the plan will coexist in a harmonious manner with nearby existing properties. Decisions, calendar number 25S-01. Now therefore be it resolved that this zoning board of appeals would determine that this request by the Galena Unit zoning or Galena Unit School District for a special use permit to allow a digital message board sign in front of the Galena High School be approved. So I think we need to have a motion on that and then a second and then.
So move. Move to approve.
Move to approve.
To approve.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Change, modifications? No? Okay, can you call the vote?
Belky.
Aye.
Mannahan.
Yes.
Sonny.
Yes.
Baranski.
Yes.
Spivey.
Yes.
Okay, Rosie can come back.
Keep your eyes closed.
Get too eager to give back.
I don't want to be the chair. Good job. Sorry, Jonathan, didn't work out.
It's one method. Take the square one.
Okay, let the record show that I have returned. All right. Next order of business is 25V-02 Public Hearing. Owner, applicant Melissa Hammer requests for a variance to reduce the west front set back to 10 feet to allow for the preferred placement of a new single-family residence facing Bridge Street at 906 Bridge Street. This being a public hearing with next to our public hearings besides. So whoever's going to speak in any one of the public hearings, I'll have Ms. Will swear you in now. We'll get that over with. So raise your right hand and.
Intend to speak, please raise your right hand. You two, do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Okay, and you both have signed? Okay, awesome. Thank you. So I guess we'll start with our first entertaining motion for public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing on 25 Victor 02.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed to any carry. Young lady, would you like to come forward? State your name and address for the record and then explain to us what it is you're looking for.
My name is Melissa Hammer. And I'm asking for a variance on the lot at 906 Bridge Street. I'd like to go from a single-family home on that lot. And I'm asking for the lot to have a variance of 10 foot instead of the 40 foot on the west side.
Okay, any, any questions of the applicant?
I actually do have a quick question. Or is there anything you'd like to say first?
No, just that this is a family lot that's been in our family for hundreds of years. And we originally owned a family farm, so we'd like to go in.
I always wondered if you owned that because I remember your mom and dad's house and then Dayton's built next door, so I didn't really think there was a full lot in there.
I didn't either.
I didn't.
So I know the.
Yeah, I was born and grew up on the corn lot.
Okay. So I know the city does not want to vacate the side, backside, whatever you want to call it down in there. The only question I would ask you is you're going to be 10 to 12 foot off of that. You know, if the city would have to run lines or, you know, change that up a bit. Any issues with you?
No, actually, I would like to work with the city to be able to maintain that area.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
So I have a question, I guess it's because it says in here the city has no plans for doing anything in that right of way.
Plans for infrastructure as far as water sewer at this point. We, there are plans that has for kind of stormwater drainage through there.
Right.
But that's out of the, out of the scope of where she wants her house.
Yeah, okay, but even if you were going to do any infrastructure, it could be on the right of way.
Be in the right of way, not on her.
Not on her property anyway. Okay. Because that, because actually that runs from there down so far and then they vacate.
That's actually Clinton Street, so that runs all the way down to, I think, where Bridge Street, not Bridge Street.
Hickory?
Hickory runs through.
To my old, where I used to live.
Yep.
But I thought it got vacated in between there years back. This was never vacated.
It's still never vacated, it's still right of way all the way through.
All right, that makes sense. Okay, any other questions? Is there anything else, Melissa, you want to say? Okay.
I'm forward to moving into the city itself.
You just wanted to tell the truth for the next 24 hours. Anyone else to speak in favor of the request? Anyone to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none, I entertain the motion to close the public hearing. Then a motion to a second.
Second.
At a second, all those in favor to close the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed to any carry. Okay. So on. I'll make a motion on it, if that's all right. I'll make a motion that we direct Jonathan to draft a positive finding of fact for calendar item number 25V-02.
I'll second that.
Second. Yeah, I, well, we'll read the thing, but I would just say in general, I mean, this is the kind of thing that a variance is for. This is one of those super idiosyncratic situations we have in Galena that are numerous. And so I think this is, this is what variances are really meant for. So. It's a good use for that property. You said, I didn't realize the property, what are you, big enough? You know, I thought it was just a narrow strip.
Election thing right there. Yeah, that'd be nice.
Well, it'd be nice to have another house in there, so. So let's go through the criteria. So number one, the question is whether the hardship is unique to the property and not self-inflicted. It is unique and it is not self-inflicted. Number two, does the variance confer special privileges on the applicant that does not? Three, the literal interpretation of provisions of the regulations would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. Four, I think it demonstrates that this is a reasonable use of the property by, by granting the variance. Five, I think it's the minimum necessary. Six, it's certainly compatible with adjacent properties. The variances will not be injurious to or reduce the value of adjacent properties. Seven, the variance will not conflict with the purposes and intents of the code, of this code. And eight, it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve. Do you call the roll, please?
Mannahan.
Yes.
Sonny.
Yes.
Baranski.
Yes.
Spivey.
Yes.
Belky.
Yes.
Rosenbaum.
Yes. Okay, next is 25V-03 and 25V-04. It's also a public hearing. Owner and applicant Deanna Wayland requests for a variance to reduce the side and rear setback and a variance to reduce the minimum landscape surface ratio to allow for a detached central car garage to the rear of the principal structure at 109 North Ben Street. I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing on 25 Victor 03. And are we doing these together?
I would say we could do them together, can't we, Jonathan?
You have to do them separate.
They have to be separate.
Huh?
You have to do them separate, they said in the past. You just have to say same testimony for the second.
Okay, so it'd be on 25V-03.
Yep.
Yeah. So we got a motion for 25V-03 to open a public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of open public hearings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed to any carry. Ms. Waylon? Would you come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, my name is Deanna Waylon and I now reside at 109 North Ben Street, which I very much as hell can say. I'm new to Galena and I love it here. So thank you for letting me speak this evening and.
It's on.
It is on and I just, I'm so sleep deprived because I've been here for three weeks. Never recognized lately when I was here. I, so I'm looking to see if it would be possible to put a garage in the back of my homes. The first home I'd ever lived in without a garage. And so the planning on Ben Street is quite challenging depending on the time of the week, which I've discovered. And I just want to say I don't have any expectations, but you know, if the garage is not something that we could discuss, then I don't know how I would go about maybe even asking about a parking space back there or something. Whatever would, you know, fit into the community if something even were. I'm very open to, you know, working on that. But right now, I'm asking to see if there is a way that we could you know, do a variance for the rear lot line, which is 25 feet as for the GIS map. So my plan, what I'd love to do is put in a one and a half car garage, which is about 15 feet wide, which would leave less footage on each side that is kind of overfired. So I'd be looking for that. And also I think the landscape surface ratios might be, I'm also, I think, referencing that with regard to the depth of the garage that I was considering. I'm looking at a plan that is a 23 foot deep garage and then maybe do a three foot apron to get into the garage off of that alleyway. So that's what I'm looking for. And I'm not quite clear, one more thing, I'm not quite clear on what the height requirements are back there. I was looking at something that's, let's see. At the very top of the peak from the.
Just your height requirement is 15 feet to the eve.
Is it?
To the eve, not to the peak of the roof, to the eve, to the bottom of the roof.
Okay, yeah, this, okay, so the plans that I have probably didn't work unless you guys would say it would. The max ridge height on this from the floor level to the, to the top would be 20 feet, so.
To all the way to the peak, though, you're talking.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, but that's not the measurement. The height we're talking about is where the bottom of the roof meets.
Oh, gotcha.
So 15 feet from there to the ground is your height, your height restriction. So I'm assuming, I've not seen your plans, it's probably close. Very steep fish roof?
Yeah, I actually made a copy of this.
It's probably below 15 feet.
It might be.
Yes. Yeah. More than likely. I have a question. Do you, do you park, I'm assuming you park on Ben Street now?
I do.
Okay, and that probably is not always easy to do?
Well, you know, I'm pretty good at, you know, parking, so it's, but it's just, you know. I mean, I just got here, so I'm just, I'm visualizing future bad weather, you know, stuff like that. And then of course on Mondays, you know, for the street sweeping and all of that, I get to park my car down over the hill and then walk back up, which I don't mind these steps, maybe it's good exercise, but there just might be some days when I may, I may want to do something other than that.
The other thing I, I would, if you do a garage back there and depending on the width of the garage and because that alley is not very wide.
It's not.
And so I think that the, that the buildings that are next door, correct me if I'm wrong, is one of those at a wider garage. Sometimes they do wider garage doors so that you have enough room to swing the car in. It's like a typical Chicago alley, they do that, you know, they'll do a, they'll have a two-car garage, you know, but they'll make the door all the way the width so that you can actually swing the car in and get it in.
Exactly.
So that's something you might want to be cautious about.
I think definitely.
Question, maybe Jonathan can answer this or you can, but once a garage is there, where's the water runoff going to go? From the roof?
In that case, I've talked to Matt about it, it'll probably run it out. All the water from most of these all kind of runs in that alley and then the alley catches it and takes it out to the street and into the drains.
So there's not a problem with the buildings on the main street side as far as water? Okay, that's what I, that was my real concern.
There are a couple of questions I had. So you, you are planning to do something like that that's got a a window and something at the top? Okay.
That's what I thought, yeah.
The, the question I've got is right now it's, there's an old stone retaining wall in there? Right? In the back of your property?
No, there's one in my neighbors right next door that you've got that.
They're all, they're all by the alley.
You're right, it's not very tall, but yes.
Yeah, okay. So you, you'd have to remove that. Your neighbors would remain. And with only, what was it, three foot from this? Or is it four? I couldn't read that, Jonathan, no, it's three foot.
Three feet.
Would you be able to actually swing a car in there?
I've swung cars in places you could probably only in that.
You may have to, you may have to almost three-point turn. I mean, you may have to give it a couple of tries. That's, that's the idea of doing, of try to do as wide a door as you can because then you use the width of the door to swing the car all the way in. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
As I visited that site, I had to back all the way out of the alley without even pulling into what a garage might be. It was a three-point turn. Could be a four, could be a five point.
Yeah. But what, what does a neighbor do that has the cut-in for the driveway? Yeah, they have the same thing. The neighbor has. It's not going to be probably much wider than she's asking for and do they park a car in there?
They do.
So things in, in my first house I ever had, it was a narrow driveway right up close to the house. And then a garage was even with the back of the house. And I could get a big Chevy Caprice in there in one shot and back, back out. So, I mean, it's amazing what, that you could do it.
I could never drive anything much bigger than a Jeep Liberty anyways.
Do, do we know, Jonathan, how, how, with the, because there's, there's garages right next door. They're just a little bit further to the north. Do we know how far those are off?
I have, yeah, I'm scared, I don't know.
Is there going to be any issue, Jonathan, once she starts the excavation? Of digging that out with the neighbor's wall by their driveway?
That's something that we're going to have to talk about, yeah.
Okay. Because it does look like that actually is on the neighbor's property. That end wall.
Well, her, it's kind of an angle right there, you can kind of see where there's a pretty old looking chain link fence there. That's pretty close to where her property line is at.
Okay, so it's several feet.
Yeah, their, their wall is, whatever, close to three feet from their property line to another three feet to her garage. So you want five, six feet there between the garage and the wall and.
Oh, it screwed me up as that signpost.
Yep.
I would be happy to reduce the size of my garage. I mean, I'm just, I was just trying to see what I could, you know, get away with here in terms of like.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask for that.
But I mean, if I needed something a little smaller, I mean, because that wouldn't work, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Any other questions? Is there anything else you'd like to say?
No.
Okay.
About Galena.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of the request? Anyone to speak in opposition to the request? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to close?
I'll second.
At a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. At a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, pending, carry. Okay, so now I will entertain a motion. On twenty five B dash zero three. Owner, Dana Wayland, requests for a variance to reduce the side and rear setbacks. To allow for a single detached, single car garage. The rear of the principal structure at one oh nine North Ben Street.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, would you like to read, Bill?
Uh, or we can discuss first if you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, discuss it first, but.
I'd like to see the alley wider, but outside of that, I think her request for a garage meets the uh. Eight criteria for the. Variance.
So.
If I can read through them.
You'll have to.
We, we will, we, we, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any thoughts about it?
No, I'm just. Makes me feel better that the, there's no neighbors here opposing, yet I just wondered what. The homes are so close, what the one on. Right there would say, because it's really gonna.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I think that the, you know, we have a precedent for, for garages already along that alley. And uh. Look, anytime we can get cars off of, off of Ben Street. And get them into the alley, um. And whether they're parked, you know, on grade or, you know, uh, or in a garage, uh. I think it's, it's a huge benefit to, to everyone, and so, um. You know, at least get, at least get one car off of, off of Ben Street.
What, what's the difference? Would we allow her to put a garage there or? She just went in and cut in a driveway like her neighbor already has?
Yeah, I think the only thing.
I, I do see a difference there.
The, the main difference for these, so. She's asking basically for two, two variances, ones for the setbacks and ones for all the density standards, which are. The landscape ratio and the building size. She would still need the variance for the landscape ratio even to do the parking. Because you're still decreasing landscaping, however, she would not any longer need the variance for the setbacks.
But even though there, these are two, two separate variances, they're, one is dependent on the other. I mean, once we grant, if we grant this one. Then almost by default, we're, we're duty bound to grant the others, right, so.
But actually by having the garage there, the foundation. There's going to be a lot more support for that wall that belongs to the neighbor than if she just did a cut in and you had a. Four foot section of dirt with a bunch of stone.
With her own retaining wall.
Rocks holding it up. Because eventually that would fall over.
If it were the, if it were the first garage on the street.
Might be different.
On this alley.
That's my main.
I would say, you know, it would be.
It doesn't change the character of the garage.
It would be a harder, it would be a harder sell, but this is, the precedent has been set, and those garages have been there for years. And remember, these are alleys, right, so, um, and that's, you know, their, their primary function of an alley is to park cars. And to take and to have a place for garbage, um, so, uh, you know, I, I think it's, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Anything else? Any other comments?
No.
You want to read the criteria?
The eight criteria?
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Hardship unique to the property, not self inflicted. Uh, I don't think it's, you know, it's the whole alley. Uh, special privilege, again, same reason. Literal interpretation, well, we've been literal here, but uh. It doesn't, it doesn't deprive anybody along that alley or in the neighborhood of any rights or privileges there. Reasonable use, yes. Minimum necessary, yes. Compatible with adjacent properties, yes, and conformance with the purposes of this code, yes. Conformance with the comprehensive plan, yes.
Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second to approve. I'll, please, I'll call for the roll.
Honey?
Yes.
Beranski?
Yes.
Feige?
Yes.
Fauci?
Yes.
Manahan?
Yes.
Rosenbaum?
Yes. Okay, now for the next section on twenty five B dash four. Has to do with the minimum landscape surface ratio allowed for the single, detached, single car garage. I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
And, and the max building size, it's just the, it's the density standard variance, so it has to do with the landscape ratio and the max building size.
So I entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Another second?
Second.
All those uh in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, pending, carried. Alright, would you like to step back up again? And really, all you have to do is tell us that it's the same testimony you presented to begin with.
It's the same testimony that I presented to begin with.
And then state your name and address.
Deanna Wayland, one zero nine North Ben Street.
Well done. Okay, any other questions?
No questions.
Okay, so.
Any other?
With that, I guess uh. There's no one here that spoke in favor or against the last time, so has that changed? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion, got a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, pending, carried. Okay, so. Uh, on this, any discussion or just entertain a motion to?
I can, I can do one.
Go ahead.
I'll, I move that we direct Jonathan to draft the positive finding the fact calendar number. Or calendar item twenty five V dash zero four.
A second?
Second.
At a second. Any discussion?
I think we kind of said most of it before, so.
One, like you said, you can't deny this one.
Yeah.
After it's a first.
One goes with the other, but uh, yeah, I just think generally it's, it's a good idea.
Okay.
Go through the criteria. Again, uh, so number one, um. The hardship unique to the property, uh, and it's not self inflicted. Uh, two. Uh, this will not confer special privilege on the applicant that other lands are denied. Three, um, the literal interpretation would deprive the applicant of the rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. Four, of the applicant, it is, um, will derive with reasonable use and could not otherwise. Minimum necessary, yes. Uh, six, is it compatible with adjacent properties? It is. Seven, is it conformance with the purposes of this code? It definitely is. And eight, is it conformance with the comprehensive plan? I would submit that it is.
Okay, on twenty five B dash zero four, we have a motion to approve and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Beranski?
Yes.
Feige?
Yes.
Fauci?
Yes.
Manahan?
Yes.
Honey?
Yes.
And Rosenbaum?
Yes. Okay, last but not least, twenty five A dash zero three. Also a public hearing. Owner and applicant, City of Galena, request for a text amendment to the City of Galena zoning court of order. Code of ordinances. To amend tables one fifty four dash four oh three, one, D and G for limited land uses.
Jonathan, you're going to get up there and you're going to, you're going to.
I'm going to probably stand right here, sit right here.
Entertainer motion to open the public.
Anyone address, please?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing on twenty five A zero three.
You got a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, pending, carry.
Will you sworn in? I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Everybody else, follow the rules all night, and you did.
My fault, my fault.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
This doesn't happen very often. I mean, it's happened a handful of times.
Joe would.
I asked, I said, just you two.
Yeah, no, I didn't. I didn't even think anything of it, yeah.
Unbelievable. Let's start all over.
Um, well, as some of you are aware, some of you have, I think, come on the board since. We have found some of these errors. Uh, we noticed, oh, what, four or five months ago-ish?
Yeah.
That, uh, there were some errors, basically primarily in the ag land uses and the industrial land uses where. At some point, we were allowing. All ag land uses essentially and all industrial land uses and all the. All the zoning districts that they shouldn't be allowed in and not in the ones that they should be, so, for example.
The typo, right?
Yeah, it was a typo. Then I'm getting to that. All the, all the light and heavy industrial land uses were permitted in all of the residential. And commercial districts, but not in the industrial, so. We, obviously that was an error. We just needed to find out when, why, and how. So with the help of Sam, Sam went digging through all the ordinances in the back, all the amendments. Um, at the end of that section and found that in twenty nineteen, when. The city passed the cannabis ordinances, when that happened, and it's just, it was a, it was a typo. Uh, it appears that it looked like maybe a copy paste error that was just overlooked. Um, as you can see kind of on here where we highlight additions, highlight underlined additions and strike deletions. They were all underlined, but nothing was highlighted on that when it went through to American Legal and. They codified it that way. So now we have to go through the process of correcting it to what it was pre twenty nineteen.
That's the only way.
To the appropriate, this is the only way to get it changed back that way on American Legal on the website.
That makes sense.
And that, that's what this is about. Um, and it does look like a lot if you look at these tables, but if you have any questions?
This, my question was, the type, wa- wa- was it American?
No, it was on our end.
Oh, it was on our end, okay, okay, okay. Okay.
When I, when I.
And so that's why they couldn't change it without, I thought maybe they made the, the, the mistake.
We did find, we did find.
It makes sense, they won't change it.
Yeah, it does.
There was one, there was one error in, I think it was the ag table. That was their error, and we brought that to their attention and they just fixed that one.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, well, are we good?
I'm good with the.
I'll make a motion.
Making the correction, hold on, I have to close the public here. Anything else, Jonathan?
Any other questions?
Any other questions to Jonathan? Anyone to speak in favor of Jonathan tonight? Anybody that can speak against Jonathan? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on twenty five Alpha zero three for the request for a text amendment.
We have a second.
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, pending, carry. Okay, now I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty five Alpha zero three, City of Galena, request a text.
We have a second.
Positive recommendation of the council. It's a forward, a positive recommendation to the city council.
You got that, too?
Yep.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there anything in there, any discussion? I mean, it fixes future problems down the road, so. Glad I got caught. There's really nothing to read on that.
We have to go through the.
We have to go through the criteria.
Okay, item one, whether the existing text or zoning designation was an error at the time of the adoption that was explained by Mr. Miller, it was an error, it was on the city's parts. Two, whether there has been a change in the character in the area or throughout the city due to the installation of public facilities. Other zone changes, new growth trends, development transitions, et cetera, not with respect to this, so. Item three, whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding area defining characteristics of the proposed zoning district. Or whether there may be adverse impacts on the capacity or safety of the portion of street network influenced by the rezoning, parking problems. Or environmental impacts that the new zone may generate such as. Excessive water runoff, water, air, or noise pollution, excessive nighttime lighting, or other nuisances. No, this actually protects us from all of those. Item four, whether the proposal is in conformance with. And in furtherance of the implementation of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Other adopted plans and the policies and intents and requirements of this code and other city regulations, as a matter of fact, it brings us back into. Conformance with the comprehensive plan. Item five, whether adequate public facilities and services are available or will be made available concurrent with the project impacts of development in the proposed zone. There's no development, we're going back to the way it was before the era was made. Six, whether there is an adequate supply of land available in the subject area and the surrounding community to accommodate the zoning and community needs of. I'd actually say this is not applicable, this is just a restructure, okay. Seven, whether there is a need in the community for the proposal and whether there will be benefits derived by the community. For the rezoning, yes, it brings us back into compliance with the comprehensive plan and protects us with those items noted in item three.